Welcome to the Towne Valgrade planning board meeting Tuesday, April the 9th. It is a little after six o'clock, six oh seven. We have been sharing stories about the solar eclipse on yesterday, so I'm sorry about that. I hope you guys were able to enjoy that. And today, the only item on the agenda is to go over the ordinances, upgrades, or little changes to the ordinances in order to comply with the LD 2003. Basically, the changes that we have to the two ordinances were given to us, the latest changes were given to us by our town attorney. And then also, we have different grammar and typo suggestions from Mrs. Barbara Allen. And we have Mr. Seal volunteer to take up those and incorporate them in the ordinances. So we're going to be reviewing those and then agreeing on them if we have agreement and voting on the latest version of both ordinances. I don't know if anybody else in the board would like to make additional comments, suggestions?
One way, I was just wondering if we could dispense with the grammatical edits and stuff and just, you know, say they're good and rather than going through them one by one because they're pretty minor. I've gone through them individually and they're no big deal. Just writing English basically and move on to, you know, the attorney's comments.
Okay, so you're going to do that, vote first on the top, you know, on the typos and then go to the...
Well, yeah, I mean, the basic English edits, you know, there's no substance there to discuss really.
Sure.
And so I just love, you know, dispense with those, say they're good, and then move on to the substantive comments from the attorney.
So the thing is, should we put a motion to vote with those or...
If you want to do it, or we can, you can do it any way you'd like. We could do that, we could do it all together.
So I want to take a motion to approve the typos and grammar upgrades on both ordinances.
I'll make a motion to approve Barbara Allen's English edits of March 22nd.
I'll second that.
I'll second it. So we're going to vote on that. So Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Lang is five guesses, no one opposed. So we already approved the edits and typos and we're done. Next will be the recommendations from the town attorney. And all of them are right here, isn't it, Hans? And this, and this right up.
That's what Brian said?
Yep. Basically, I think here, basically, what she was going to, was going to go with was the ones that are...
Yeah, that's the attorney comments?
Yeah.
Her comments. The first comment under, for the multi-family dwelling unit ordinance, which she took up first, was to eliminate unneeded definitions, and he spells out which those are accessory dwelling units, accessory structures, affordable housing development, area of median income, base density. All those are also defined in the minimum lot size ordinance. And it's in the minimum lot size ordinance where you deal with accessory dwelling units and affordable housing development, and that in turn brings into play area of median income and base density. So I think we can easily just scratch those definitions out based on his recommendation. Those are not, not used in the multi-family dwelling unit.
It's not in the ordinance.
No, yeah.
So should we vote as we go, item by item, or?
Sure.
Okay, so that item, so I want to take a motion to approve those, remove those definitions.
Make a motion, we accept the George's recommendation, as said, provided by the attorney, to eliminate the words George referenced out of the minimum lot size ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, so I have, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So again, we're tackling item 1A, and that is a multi-dwelling ordinance, unnecessary definitions. And that includes accessory dwelling units, accessory structure, affordable housing development, area of median income, and base density. So those will be removed.
Yeah, I think anything else that's not in the ordinance that doesn't contain the ordinance, right?
Yeah.
Maybe others.
So are we ready to vote? So Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Lang is five in favor, no one opposed. Do you follow your relationship?
Oh, well, so 1B is in the enforcement section, which is on page 13. And it looks like the original wording was not consistent with state statutes. And the town attorney edited to include language $100 for each violation, which you can see in D, second last line in section 10. And the page numbering, I'm using the one that Hans provided us rather than the version that went to the select board.
What page is that?
13.
13 of the multiple, multi-family dwelling ordinance.
Yeah. And it was what, 10D, section 10D.
I think you're looking at the minimum size lot.
10D.
Yeah, the one in blue, yeah.
13. Indeed. So the way it's written, referencing the 38A MRSA, that has a minimum $100 a day, it's one maximum $5,000 a day. The statute cites a range. And I'm not sure the statute says that it's a misdemeanor the way it's written in here, section 10. So the way he changed 10D, you think it may not be consistent with the statute?
Well, in 10D, I don't recall it ever saying it's guilty of a misdemeanor. Because that would mean I can charge somebody with a crime. These are violations of an ordinance, not a crime. Just move to the bottom. So let me check.
Sounds like the amount of the penalty is wrong too, based on what you just said.
Too low?
Yeah, well, yeah, it sounds like $100 is the minimum.
$100 for each violation. Quite sure that Hans is right. The $1,000 a day.
Yeah, so it's $100 for each violation, so they can only charge for 10 violations. So it's no more than $1,000 a day.
I actually didn't look at the statute myself.
I'm quite sure it's a minimum $100 a day and up to $1,000, something like that.
I don't have my computer. I don't have to look completely. State statute. I can't compare it to a new scene.
George, we're waiting for Hans. On the minimum lot size ordinance, again, it's a typo. I didn't know whether you had thought on page 66, residential use.
Were you ordering to run your minimum lot size?
Yeah, minimum lot size, page 66. I got to find it. Oh. You see that under 1 is A, B, C, and then two bullets?
Yeah.
The next line under there says all lots must be configured in such a way that a circle having a radius, and then we added radius of, and we added radius of.
Run that by me again.
Okay, the line that says all lots must be configured in such a way?
Right.
Got that? That a circle having a radius of?
Oh, the radius.
We added radius of to something that's already there.
Yeah, okay.
It should be one of the things.
I'll take care of that.
Okay. Well, how are you doing, Hans?
Very fine. So here we are. So can you guys give me some wording? It will be like enforcement for what? Like a search and...
So you want the citation that he gave?
Yeah, so what is the enforcement covering, multi-dwelling unit?
Yes, right, so it's, and it may be general enforcement provisions for town ordinances.
That's the part, yeah.
So it's Title 30- A, subsection 4452.
They're on the front row.
What is the section again?
4452.
I got enforcement of land uses ordinances, so it reads...
Oh, yeah, there it is. The minimum penalty for a specific violation is $100, and the maximum penalty is $5,000. It's 3B.
Maximum is 2,500, is it?
Under civil penalties, three.
Minimum, I mean, maximum.
In favor for a minute. Maximum penalty is...
It actually is more, well, that has a partial zoning, so that's not relevant here. The higher penalties of resource protection.
Well, I don't see any of them, Mr. Aaron, can you?
It can't be.
You know what might be a good way to deal with this is to just include a reference to the statute.
Yeah, because that can change.
That way you capture the whole thing.
Yeah. Definitely.
I don't know how that was worded originally, but...
So I actually like that idea, because the statute can change, and then we don't have to change the ordinance.
Yeah, statute covers a lot.
Thank you, Hans.
And misdemeanor bring to a particular type of enforcement. I'm excited to see what I do.
So we were discussing, Hans, that maybe it's easier to cite the statute. It's right here, actually. Oh, wait a second. It's not, it's in this. It's one of the cases in the notes that he gave.
But it's not written here.
There is no written here, yeah. So we should probably cite the statute in the ordinance, and then whoever's looking for the amount of violation can refer to the statute in it. The statute might change through years.
So Hans, you said misdemeanor needs to be deleted?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so what if we change the language in that, in D, to starting in the second line, receiving notice of such violation. So it would read, any person who continues to violate any provision of this ordinance after receiving notice of such violation shall be subject to a fine and delete up to $100 for each violation and substitute in importance with Title 30- A subsection 4452. So that would include the range that isn't there in any other provisions.
Kind of like what was written here. B, because that's the state language that the state uses. I want to see what enforcement.
What are you referring to?
From those notes, B, enforcement.
Yeah.
What he said, you know, he took out.
Yeah.
That's typically what appears in state ordinances, so that's the state language.
So you want to use the language that said land use ordinances are subject to enforcement provisions of...
Yes, and if you want to quote the amounts, you know, go further to say, you know, $100 per day or $2,500, whatever how it's written in here.
It's kind of weird that that section's labeled B, really shouldn't be.
Well, I think that was taken from the old ordinance, 1970, yeah. Yeah, actually, that's where the misdemeanor came from too.
But that should probably be fine, shouldn't it?
So... So what?
Let's see here.
That subsection D came from our old ordinance, any person who continues violating, so...
So you want to scrap this whole paragraph?
The D, and yes.
And start off with land use ordinances are subject to the enforcement provisions of 38, 4452. And what, with penalties?
Who defines outline in that statute?
Or just leave it at that?
Well, our other ordinance, the minimum lot size ordinance, has language almost like you had just said. It says fines any person, including but not limited to a landowner, a landowner's agent, or a contractor who orders or conducts any activity of violation of ordinance shall be penalized with burdens with Title 38 MRSA, section 4452. It's on page 21.
So maybe we could just copy and paste that?
Definitely, if that works.
Very likely, when you said, Rich?
Yeah, page 21. About third way down.
Okay, so the proposal is to eliminate what's currently in D entirely and label it fine, well, basically, copy and paste what's on, in paragraph four on page 21 in the minimum lot size.
And because he does put a little note here that it's best not to include fees.
Yep. So it will be, it will be...
So you just copy and paste, like?
Copy and paste, copy and paste the whole number four in page 21 of the maximum lot size, minimum lot size, I'm sorry, and copy it into page 13, section 10D.
Question, Rich?
So I guess I want to take a motion to make this change.
I'll make a motion that we amend section 10D by replacing the language with the same language as is used in the minimum, the enforcement section of the minimum lot size ordinance on, in paragraph four, page 21 of that ordinance.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I don't see further discussion. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Lang is a yes, five guesses, no one opposed. And that passes.
So we're on to the minimum lot size ordinance, section 4F, which has to do with accessory dwelling units. It's on page 1. The paragraph in the middle is red. Furnaces of the opinion that we don't need it, and Brian concurred with them. Looks like we can eliminate that paragraph of accessory dwelling units.
Do I have a motion for such?
I'll make a motion to accept the attorney's recommendation to delete section 4F of the minimum lot size ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Discussion. I hear no discussion. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Lang is five guesses, no one opposed, that change took place, as we needed.
So the most complicated of the comments that we've received for either ordinance for that matter, but for the minimum lot size ordinance is this next one, section 5B C, which is on page six. And deals with residential uses and spells out lot area and road frontage and things of that nature. The first, the way I would summarize the comments that we got from the town attorney are twofold. The first is sort of a formatting that would, were suggesting that it's hard to follow, basically, and I found it hard to follow because of indentations not being correct. And the second of the sub-paragraphs, that is, the second, which is a comment of substance rather than format, is that, and I think we all knew this, but I guess didn't think it was that much of a problem, but apparently it is, is that the lot size requirements in this ordinance differs from that in the multi-family dwelling unit ordinance, mere call. That's 40,000 square feet plus 20,000 square feet per bedroom. Here is however many dwelling units you have times 40,000 square feet. His recommendation was, well, it makes three things for us to consider, or three recommendations. We either add some language to the main, to the minimum lot size ordinance that he suggests. And he doesn't really say where, that, to be honest with you, I was confused by. A second suggestion is that we change the lot requirements in it in such that they're consistent in the two ordinances. And thirdly, is that we require a lesser amount of lot area for each additional unit. I'm not sure what he means by that, maybe. And this, this applies in particular to when you have more than three or more dwelling units on the same lot. Because that's when the two ordinances both come into play. Because at that point, you have a multi-family dwelling unit, dwelling development. My take on this, for what it's worth, is that it would be rather than rehashing the discussions we've had in the past about the actual numbers, that we try to make the ordinance, just keep the numbers we have and just make the ordinances consistent with each other. And I've come up with some possible language for... Uh and I I've come up with with a some possible language for people to consider to do that. And why don't I hand that out now and and you can take a couple minutes to look at it? So this is simply a a copy and paste of that of of that same. Section B residential use uh from the minimum lot size ordinance. And you'll see that after sub paragraph C. Um I I just. Um cleaned up the formatting so that it makes it reads and makes more sense. That's all I did there, but when you get to um D and E is where um I attempted. To match the two ordinances so they didn't conflict with one another. So in D, that continues to retain. The current minimum lot size ordinance requirement of if you build a second dwelling. On a lot, that you need to have eighty thousand square feet, in other words, two times forty thousand square feet, just like now. And um and in E that I've added, it just um. It it refers you to the multi-dwelling unit. Uh lot size requirement. Uh for three or four units or however many, three or more, and that again would be to forty thousand. Uh plus uh an additional twenty thousand for each bedroom. Which also is what is current.
Addressing the issue, I'm sure.
What's that?
I said it addresses the issue in my mind.
It it does, as long as people wanna keep it the same, if you wanna do something else, then it doesn't.
My only uh reservation about this is. You know, in the development zone of the comprehensive plan, an undeveloped lot is allowed to have four units. Now, you got one ordinance saying you can have four units. And then this is saying that goes to the minimum, I mean multifamily. Three or more resident uh dwelling units. ADUs are individual, or they can be what, two, right, they can be duplexes. So I think we just need to clarify here that three or more residential dwelling units in one structure.
Well, it could be separate structures too, though.
Well, that's where it gets complicated, because comprehensive plan says four units per lot could be allowed in a growth area and.
So that that's only for growth.
Are are you talking about uh in the next section that has to do with the accessory dwelling units?
The accessory, and the accessory dwelling unit. Of a undeveloped lot in the growth area can have four units, two primaries, two ADUs.
That's only in the growth area.
So a a multifamily dwelling unit is three family units in one structure, right, three or more. If we look at definitions. So I think we need to basically make E is good, but we gotta clarify. Make the word is the same as what's in the definition, the verbiage, sorry, it's a long, end of the thing.
Cause in the, somewhere in the ADU section, it says, you know, for lot sizes. See above, see residential use.
Um yeah, multifamily, a structure containing three or more dwelling units.
But aren't those two mutually exclusive requirements? I mean, it allows up to four, but doesn't say you get four. You get four only if you have enough lot size and meet the other provisions. It doesn't automatically guarantee you four. That's how I read it.
Yeah.
Existing, I mean.
But it can be, so, but we can't by default say three or more has to go to multifamily lot, which is what he was saying. What he is saying is, when three or more residential dwellings are developed on a single lot, they need the minimum lot size requirements of Belgrade's multifamily. So you can't have it just default over to another ordinance.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you've lost me um.
George, you're just saying as far as the lot size requirements, right?
Yeah.
As long as you, as if you wanna build four units, as long as you have this, these requirements, you have the space and you can do it.
Right.
Keep it consistent with, except yeah.
Right.
I I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean. I'm sorry, I spilled, I'm sorry, I'm saying.
Within our minimum lot size ordinance. Forty thousand square feet are minimum lot size.
Right.
And with the ADU rules. If the undeveloped lot is in a growth area, they are allowed up to four dwelling.
But they have to have the right, then the amount of space.
Has to be able to do accepted, right, but but you can do four on forty thousand square feet, you don't have to have a double lot.
Right. You do four units on forty thousand square feet?
Yeah, have two. That's what the rule says, and we talked about it, it references the comprehensive plan.
So, I mean, it depends on how many bedrooms they have.
It wasn't that?
Comprehensive plan, I mean, accessory dwelling units doesn't count bedrooms.
Yeah, but.
It does if it's a multifamily dwelling.
And that's where we're separating ordinances.
But that's what the caveat that is in the growth area.
Right, isn't the limit is two if it's not?
Exactly, a primary and an accessory. So, I'm just saying the verbiage in E cannot say, I shouldn't say, develop on a single lot. I mean, because that is allowed, they're born on a single lot.
No matter what the lot size, I mean, well, minimum forty thousand. Let me see how that works.
It all says we want, but it's the way the rules are written, that those are the name of it down.
But again, that's, I think this will fly, it will fly with the exception. That if it's in a growth area, then you can apply your rule.
See, it's on page eight of the minimum lot size, page three, page eight, oh eight. Two, undeveloped parcels. Little I.
So the way I read it is uh because this is in the designated growth area. This rule that we just read doesn't apply.
They cannot.
I I don't read it that way, but again, these are mutually exclusive. Yes, you can have up to four, but.
For the subdivision ordinance requirements to apply.
Yeah, subdivisions, their their rules apply.
Yeah, I I I I read it differently, Hans, I I read this as being exclusive, that that um. Yes, you can have up to four dwelling units uh on a single lot um. But you still have to meet the other land use requirements.
Right.
To do so.
Okay, so undeveloped parcels, no existing dwelling on the property. So parcel is located in designated third, on July one. So.
So then then what I hear is being said is that that two I will will fly. However, they still have to meet E, B, B one eight.
Right, and road frontage and all the other requirements.
I think that's a direct conflict with what. Is we have to adopt here. I mean, this is what the state says we have to do, is allow four per lot.
Well, we can be more stringent.
No, no, we can be more relaxed.
Right, Hans is correct.
Sort of like zone you can be.
This in this particular case.
Yes, so with this one E, we're being more restrictive. Our minimum lot size is no longer any good for four units, you have to go to. Our multifamily dwelling unit, lot size, which is double.
In in Branya's paragraph that she wrote up. It it makes, she doesn't come right out and say it, but. Uh she certainly seems to imply that um. You know, you're not guaranteed four ADUs, you're just, you can have up to four ADUs, but you still need the required lot area. There we can stick with the required lot area.
I thought that was something that she said that the law will not be. Uh modified, that we have the right to keep our lot area, however you want. The specification of that.
But nowhere does the state give uh lot size, right, it just says.
State lot size is twenty thousand.
Yeah.
No way does it say in L D two thousand and three that you can have four units on twenty thousand square foot lot in a growth area.
No.
Right, so they're obviously saying that we have to use other ordinances.
Right, yeah, right, that's right.
Have to go off of our other ordinances and and if we pick an already established ordinance, we're not getting any stricter, we're going off of something we already have established. Which is what George was saying, we'll go off of. Forty thousand.
And the other provision that they have is that we can't be more stringent. For any of these types of housing than we would be for a single family residence.
Yeah. Or we could use a single family residence as, if we want to, which would require you to have a much bigger lot to get four units on.
There's some kind of reminders we could make that clear.
And I I think that's needed somehow.
I can see both sides of the story, look at that. You know, there is up to, you'd say, well, it it says can have four, it wouldn't say up to. At the same time, it says they're allowed to have up to.
Actually, to make it more complicated. This L D two thousand and three just says existing lots. Doesn't have to be forty thousand, if it's illegally existing, nonperforming lot. It can, has to be treated.
Well, I mean, but I would imagine that they'd be very gentle in their language because they're trying to, you know. They're talking to the whole state, but once we get down on, you know, on in our town, we can then pick and choose what those sizes are.
Well, we have to live by what's written here, it's an existing lot.
Yeah.
It's an existing lot, and if it's a lot.
Doesn't mean that have four ADUs.
No, it has to meet the requirements.
It could be a twenty thousand, thirty thousand square foot lot. It doesn't mean that you can't invite the four ADUs on it even though it's in the development. There, and they still have to come by, I mean, we still have whole rule. In town, town, they can't take out.
Well, I'm just saying, reading what it says is undeveloped parcels as of July one, or the June one. And if it's located in designated growth area. You know.
Yeah, but it doesn't give a size.
Yeah, it does not, that's the what's.
Well, that's all right, so we can name.
We we give the size.
I don't think we have that latitude.
You can't just squeeze four places on a little tiny law just because the state says you can.
And well, and I don't, I don't even think that's what they say.
So I think um I would say that in page eight of the uh minimum lot size. In item two I, we need to add some language that clears that up, that. It has to be followed uh. The uh. The uh rule. Of uh section B of residential use.
And that's kind of what the attorney was saying, wasn't it, that we should make him, that was the second option he gave.
That is the next.
So if you go to page nine, there's fairly universal language in sub paragraph seven. And it says, housing units developed under the section must comply with Belgrade's requirements for minimum lot dimension. Dimensions, minimum lot size and setback performance per dwelling unit as stated in ordinance se- section five, that brings us back to the. The section that we were just working on. Or or how uh how we amend it.
Well, yeah, multiple design.
So I guess we're covered then.
Yeah, because again, getting back to the attorney's comments. You know, he's recommending that um. Again, this is only for when you have more than three or more dwelling units. It doesn't apply to the the first two um that we make two uh ordinances consistent.
So should we add, should we add a language in page eight? Two I that says at the end, look at page uh. Piss over to page nine, sec- uh item nine. Something last word, because if somebody's reading this and they just backing themselves in that. In that item, undeveloped parcels. It almost, it almost seems like that can flip off, I can see that happening.
We can, I personally don't, the way this is constructed, I don't think it's needed, but. This sentence is pretty clear that it applies to the whole section.
See that, saying seven uh applies to developed parcels, then two is undeveloped parcels.
No, no, it doesn't, it doesn't, it applies to both. It's its own separate, it's on equal standing with three, which is developed parcel and two, which is undeveloped. So it applies to both.
Yes, the whole section.
And then, George, hopefully I'm here, but I see more conflict with the way this is worded. I'm back, going back to undeveloped parcels number two. Where, you know, towards the last sentence, if the third and fourth. Units are built within a five year period, this may be subject to the subdivision process. ADUs aren't supposed to be sold. Right? So how would that meet subdivision, they're assuming here that you're selling these individual units.
Or they're saying if you just wanna add on to it.
So is that just some legal language to cover? So this, you know, sells off, well.
Well, I mean, and and that's consistent with the the multifamily dwelling unit, I mean, it uh. Well, if somebody constructs a apartment complex of four apartments. All at the same time, they trigger the subdivision ordinance as well as the multifamily ordinance, they they have to apply under both. And that that this is just a reiteration of that, but they have, if they do it out, you know, if they do one and space it out so that they. Do one every five years or whatever, something like that, they can avoid it.
I can see the AD, they would bundle this to so much that. Well, AD said we have to allow four, and then they talk about subdivision. Well, the ADU, the basic concept is we're not individual dwelling units, they're two. They're two dwelling units all properly enough to be separated, so because in that language that we put in here too.
So this whole thing, the more I've learned about it over, we rushed through it too quickly. And the more I've learned on my way through. I'm still in the mindset, towns need to get together or push back. We're in a watershed area, why are they taking over, why are we losing hold of? Why is all this happening? Without any pushback from towns like us.
I won't disagree with that, Craig, but the thing is that our hands are.
There's no enforcement. So our hands aren't tied.
Say that again.
There's no enforcement written into this ADU then. So there's, our hands aren't tied. There's no way, there's no way they should be coming into our watershed area. And dictating this, it's gotta be unconstitutional.
Yeah, I agree.
Because the ADUs is supposed to be subservient to the primary dwelling. And that's supposed to be peeled off, sold independently.
It doesn't matter, still people, it's still the same amount of people, whether it's living independently or not. It's the same amount of people.
I get that, Craig, I'm just going back to what's written in here about referencing subdivision, if you get one on a lot. You according to these rules, you can't subdivide, so why would they say refer to subdivision rules?
Because it's the same as the multi family ordinance.
Like that, I really.
I understand your point, Craig, and it begs the question of why this hasn't already been tested in the courts? Because this has been around since, what, two thousand twenty one? I mean, I don't know the answer, but you know, wouldn't you think, I mean.
Well, now we're getting to push the show where towns have to deal with that, and I'm surprised there's not more towns pushing back.
What was gonna happen?
This is, you know, if they want to do this down and sell it, rain, or so, you got all kinds of. City water, city shoes, or this, da, 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 da. Don't force it on the lots, that's losing our own rule.
I wouldn't disagree with any of that, believe me, just is 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 a state law. And and I said town, I just implied we're we're getting this now, it might happen. It might happen that we do our job here. We comply with the state law, and when this goes to the town, the town is gonna vote it down.
If that happens, so then we just rely on, let's say, laws. We lose anything that we gained. So that if we vote it down, we're gonna be screwed more than we are.
Unless we go back to the. Table.
So this isn't something that must be voted down as much as I would like to.
So let's see here.
So I'm on the lean way of making it as stringent as we can, and if the lawyer hasn't said anything about, you know. This verbiage, and I say we add it.
Add eighty thousand per year. Single family.
There's nothing that's gonna happen if we don't have this ready in July first. There's gonna be half the state that doesn't have this, they're gonna go find every municipality there is while breaking the constitution and doing it. I don't think so, because that's gonna bring up a pushback, and that's gonna bring up a lot of legality.
Danny said that there was pushback. When they passed it, not everybody was on board with us.
MMA was a.
Yeah. Naturally, we should talk into.
So I'm saying. Let's keep it stringent.
Yes.
So should we add that which in two I to make sure that. The um the section seven is compliant with. Make it more redundant.
So this was being added to page six, correct?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, it it's. A reorganization of the same language with the exception of what's in D and E. I mean, I I wouldn't try and accomplish anything more than to address the uh attorney's comment.
No, I think what you did was fair, you know, using the multi multifamily dwelling ordinance. You need forty thousand per. You know, if you want to build four units, three units, you need, you know, you need a hundred thousand square foot.
How about we just put in primary residential role? Make sure ADUs aren't. This gets screwed, it's being acceptable.
I mean, ADU is a residential dwelling.
But it's not primary.
It's no, it isn't primary, but it is a residential dwelling. Needs a definition of residential dwelling.
One thing that I, it seems like the ordinance, this is someone's gonna bring up later or whatever, when we get through this. The ordinance seems to interchange dwelling unit and residential dwelling.
Yeah.
We have two definitions, we have a definition dwelling unit and a definition of residential dwelling. But yet, it doesn't seem to, it's in the ordinance itself, it doesn't really distinguish that we've got two. Throws residential in and the same paragraph it uses dwelling unit, uh that doesn't make sense to me.
I didn't pick up on that. Principal structure is another definition. The primary is unit structure. Is there a separate definition for residential dwelling?
Yes, and it's in both ordinances.
Wonder if that's a holdover from the old ordinance or something.
It very well may be, I I don't know for sure, but it almost seems to me that uh. We want them to be deleted and then we use it, although then you get. Back to you might have to. Go through the ordinance and where it says dwelling unit, change it to residential dwelling, so it's consistent all the way. Uh but we've got definitions of. Two different definitions for what appears to be the same kind of, same kind of. Structure or whatever.
But the, the same concept has three different words or two different phrases. Dwelling unit, residential unit, and principal structure, they're the same thing.
Yeah, the dwelling unit, it seems to kind of lean towards like rentals. Or above that, halftime share. Rental. It doesn't say anything about rent. It but oh, it does, it says through sale or.
Well, it includes multifamily.
Yeah.
Single family, multifamily, condominiums, timeshare units, and apartments.
Yeah, that is weird. And if it's problematic, I don't know, I I don't even know the answer that way.
Principal structure, because principal structure. A structure other than one which is used for purposes wholly incidental or accessory to the use of another building. And accessory dwelling unit is accessory to the use of the primary structure. Our principal structure. But it's still a dwelling.
It is.
Rich, when you discovered this, did you find places where. It created a problem, because the definitions are slightly different. Residential dwelling unit seems to apply way or uh to a single, just a single family residence.
Yeah, the only thing I saw. What might be problematic is that I didn't, and I'm gonna look through it is a paragraph that. It talks about dwelling unit, residential dwelling unit, and the next sentence says when a dwelling unit. And maybe, maybe it was intended that way, I don't think so, but I think it's uh.
Think they left out the word residential, it's like that.
Well, here's an example, in in the section that we've been uh discussing, you know, residential use. On page six, number one is lot area dimensions, a lot upon which. A residential dwelling unit is to be permitted, shall, and A, of course. Imploys just one. Uh and so that would be for single family homes um. And that was one reason, when I realized that, that I thought we needed to go beyond. Um and deal with, you know, the second home and the third and fourth homes. Or dwelling units, I should say.
Here, here's uh, if it's on the same page, George, if you go down to uh. Just down to the last paragraph with the last board, residential dwelling units. Uh let's see. Developed under this ordinance must meet the minimum lot dimensions for forty thousand square feet, and then the uh.
It's her dwelling unit.
Her dwelling unit, then the next sentence says, for example, one dwelling unit. Requires forty thousand square feet, two dwelling units. Uh but we're talking about residential dwelling units at the beginning of Eric.
Oh, yeah, right, I see what you mean.
Two different words. The the last board.
Yeah.
We're switching both uh dwelling unit and a residential dwelling unit, but I'm sure it's intended to be. Meet the same, same uh. Residential dwelling unit that started out the sentence or paragraph.
Well, they gotta cross.
You gotta cross it off, it said residential, so we cross it off. Uh it says two residential dwellings, but he crosses residential up.
So in the language that I've proposed, Rich, I should, really, the word residential should be crossed out wherever it appears. I think is what you're suggesting. Maybe we're wrong.
Now, residential.
It's it's gotta be consistent.
It's it's unique that residential. It is unique that residential dwelling units includes mobile homes. In the definition.
And it seems as if residential dwelling units don't include like leases and. You know, it seems like if you do a lease or something like that, then it's a dwelling.
Says a residential dwelling unit is a room or group of rooms.
One's family.
It's usually for use as permanent, seasonal, or temporary living quarters of one family.
One, single family.
Yeah.
Yes, who's gonna check?
Yeah.
Are you married? I'm not married, I live with somebody else. What does that make my house?
So what happens is they just take out.
Well, that's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, just make it dwelling.
I mean, whether there's other issues like that elsewhere in the organs, I don't know, but. But that that one's particularly important because other sections of the ordinance keep on referring back to the these standards.
So we see, I I heard saying that in page six, that residential dwelling unit, uh that bullet is coming out, residential is coming out.
Well, what George suggested.
Yeah, so um on on the uh, the the proposal I made. Um I did use the term residential dwelling unit in D, and again in E, and I'm suggesting that I. Take out the word residential in both cases.
The only problem there is, and if somebody wants to do something and they want, they have a mobile, mobile only applies to.
Residential.
Residential, it's not mentioned in dwelling, so then. A mobile home wouldn't really apply to this. Because we taking residential out of the.
Right, but so for example, the way this is constructed at the moment, if somebody wanted to put two mobile homes. On a single lot, they would need eighty thousand square feet.
I'm just saying that the language. Dwelling unit.
Yeah, right.
Doesn't apply to that definition, so then it's almost like a mobile home wouldn't be available to put.
Right.
So why do we need, why do we need the definition to be residential dwelling unit, can we strike that residential dwelling unit altogether? And said that a dwelling unit can also be applied to a mobile home?
Yeah, unless you add mobile home to dwelling. I think that's the only, the only kind of problem.
Is there any reason to keep both uh uh. Both uh uh concepts, just keep dwelling unit, any part of the structure with uh with sale or lease. Is intended for human habitation, including a single family or multifamily unit.
Unless unless you write residential and or 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 dwelling unit every single time, residential dwelling unit or dwelling unit every time.
But on dwelling unit, it says is intended for human habitation.
Right.
That's mobile home. So it's covered, it's just not listed.
That's right. So should we strike residential all the way up?
Right, but uh but.
And then dwelling unit include, include uh, including at the end, including mobile homes? But not, but not recreational vehicles.
Yeah, recreational vehicle can be considered, you know. But it specifically says no.
So the one place where if we struck out the term residential dwelling dwelling unit, where that. Would require some creativity on our part would be. Uh the lot area dimensions for single family homes, because that's what a residential dwelling unit is, it's only one family.
I don't think we need to get that far into it, let's just remove these two.
Yeah, I I would tend to agree, or if this was January, I would say let's wallow around in this. Um but it's not January.
Well, the other thing is that you guys know that in the fall, we're gonna be reviewing the ordinances again. So let's say we do the best, what we can with this now. And let's say we got to vote and they pass, we're not in the fall, we're gonna be reviewing ordinances again. So we can add this uh scrutiny that we're trying to figure out, that would, you know, like, you hit the banner now. And work with it in the fall.
We'd also have the opportunity then to review what other towns have done. Because the dwelling run, same what we are, we're trying to mash up together, get it passed the vote, then we'll be public information.
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion that we. Uses George, George's language, striking residential. George's language striking residential. There will be D and the E. Uh who is the rest of those?
So do we have any more discussions? So I guess we are agreeing that. This new thing that happened to popping our head in our faces uh just now. We're gonna leave that discussion for the fall. And uh. I'm not myself here. And uh um. Uh added to the changes that we're gonna be doing the ordinances in the fall. And with that. Mister Steel or Mister, so we're gonna vote on on the motion that is on the floor in a second. Mister Baker. Mister Seal.
Yes.
Mister Alexander. And Mister I get a vote yes or five in favor, none opposed. Right, so next will be.
So on page eight. Uh the attorney is proposing uh that. Uh will paragraphs uh be in the I. Uh be deleted um. And Gronya agrees.
Isn't that what we had to do?
We did, but uh it's addressed elsewhere too, apparently.
We have more expecting the first time this project will.
It's just somewhere else, it's gotta be able to get a variance. And that's what we added in.
The accessory dwelling units.
Page A.
We got an extra page.
The second piece is supposed to be blank.
The way it came through, I printed it. I didn't prove it.
So there's really only two pages.
Just two page.
Yeah, it was. With a blank page in it. Uh well, I didn't read it.
It looks like you go from I's, I to.
Because that was the number one. I supposedly see, I think.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, my thought on this is it's definitely clear to leave it in. Rather than delete it. Because. Uh if I understand the attorney's argument is, well, you already. Say the same thing under accessory dwelling units, but. Somebody that. Is building a duplex or whatever, might not look at the accessory dwelling unit section. It might only look at the section and deal with additional dwellings on on a single lot. So um. We can delete it or and I don't think it does no, it doesn't do any harm to leave it.
It's just repetitive access reason.
Okay, so I'll undertake a motion to keep it. The instead of the limited to keep it.
I'll make a motion to uh retain uh. Retain uh. Uh five C, one V and VI. Uh as currently drafted.
Second, okay. Do you have any more discussion, discussion? Mister Baker?
Yes.
Mister Caro?
Yes.
Mister Seal?
Yes.
Mister Alexander. And Mister Angus, five, five in favor, nor opposed, to keep. Uh section five C, one B and B six and and six, five and six.
So on the bottom of that page, uh page eight. And um three little uh uh three little I. Um he's suggesting the last line of that. Uh paragraph be struck uh which reads Belgrade subdivision ordinance still apply. And since it's only talking about two dwelling units, that's not correct. It has to be three or more.
So just remove Belgrade subdivision? Just remove the Belgrade.
Yeah, right. That's what he's suggesting. Which makes sense to me.
Right, do I undertake a motion of that?
Make a motion that we removed Belgrade subdivision order requirements still apply. Uh in section two, three I.
Do you have a second?
My second now.
Any further discussion? Are you none? Mister Baker?
Yes.
Mister Zakara?
Yes.
Mister Seal?
Yes.
Mister Alexander?
Yes.
And Mister Angus, five yeses, none opposed. So the violation is done. We move to page nine.
By the way, um. Something I discovered and I forgot to mention it when we were talking uh earlier about errors. Uh in on page nine, uh sit in paragraph six. Says all residential twenty dwelling units permitted after January one, two thousand twenty four. Shouldn't that be July one, two thousand twenty four?
So we have, we have a um a motion to correct in page nine. Uh January to July. Uh do you have a second?
Right here.
Second. Uh we're voting on that. Wait, uh Mister uh Baker?
Yes.
Mister Zakara?
Yes.
Mister Seal?
Yes.
Mister Alexander? And Mister Angus, five in favor, nor opposed. Are we going back to um?
D twelve. Which is on page eleven. Uh this is. Uh so the language is it reads currently says an ADU must be. Firmly affixed and comply with subsurface wastewater rules. And um. Uh the attorney indicates that he thinks it could be combined with the next section. Uh Bronya actually said. She feels this should be retained. And um. Uh what our comment actually says is this should remain as is, this section is for any type of structure that could be placed on a lot. Not just recreational vehicles, including tiny homes, mobile homes, et cetera.
I agree, it should be checked.
Pointed. Can I undertake a motion to cap that uh? Section five D twelve.
Yeah, I make a motion.
I'll second.
We're second it, uh any further discussion? Are you none? So Mister Baker?
Yes.
Mister Zakara?
Yeah.
Mister Seal?
Yes.
Mister Alexander?
Yes.
And myself was five in favor, nor opposed. To keep that five D twelve. And we move now to section five E.
Right, that's. Page twelve. Uh affordable housing development. And it's um she's recommending, the attorney is recommending that we would delete the reference to zoning, so. In that first paragraph under E, um which reads affordable housing developments are permitted. He uh in all land use zoning districts that permit. Uh multifamily dwellings. Uh and are, he's suggesting that language be deleted. And so that it would only read affordable housing developments are permitted in a designated growth area. As designated by the Belgrade Conference of Plan, et cetera.
We don't have zone, no, we're about to.
So we're gonna strike off, so we're gonna have affordable housing developments are permitted. In a designated growth area. So we we're tracking from in all, all the way to end.
Yes. So it would read affordable housing developments are permitted in a designated growth area.
Do you have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that will be. In section E. Uh to leave all land use zoning districts that permit multifamily dwellings and are in. To change it to affordable housing developments are permitted in a designated growth area.
Do you have a second? Any further discussion? So Mister Baker?
Yes.
Mister Zakara?
Yes.
Mister Seal?
Yes.
Mister Alexander?
Yes.
Five in favor, nor opposed. All right, so section.
So the next um two.
Page fourteen?
Yeah, um. Sorry. Well, I need to take care. Okay, yeah, so this is uh. Apparently court courts have ruled that. Um appeals of code enforcement officer decisions have to be done. In Novo and um which means that the appeals board basically. Starts the review right from the beginning as if the plan, nobody else, as if the code enforcement officer had conducted. His own review. Uh and uh and so. Um he's suggesting um in. Um F one. On the second line, uh the term um. Administrative appeals arise be deleted and. Uh the wording, the board will decide administrative appeals on a genovial basis. So that it would read uh uh the board will decide administrative deals on a genovial basis where it is alleged that there is an error or any. Order requirements, decision or determinations made by or failure to act by the code enforcement officer in the administration of this ordinance.
I made a motion that we approve the uh suggested language of the attorney.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do you have any further discussion? Okay, so we voted Mister Baker?
Yes.
Mister Zakara?
Yes.
Mister Seal?
Yes.
Mister Alexander? And Mister Angus, yes is five, yes is none opposed. That concludes all the changes from the. Uh town attorney.
So it used to have to go to superior courts. Now it does. Now, now it would.
Say that again?
Appeals. Used to, when this was written before, although it's straight to superior court.
Right, that's correct.
Now they can be handled on the local.
Right. People, I mean, it may still end up in superior court if they appeal.
There's one more step.
Yeah, which is probably a good thing.
So. What was the logic behind it always going straight to superior court? Was that to minimize the local expense?
Back in seventy eight, it goes all the way back to that original language. I mean, that's the way it is for subdivisions, but. I also don't know the reason for that.
So that is thinking put the burden. On the appellate. They have to pay for an attorney to go to superior court.
Yeah, and I mean. You gotta be pretty serious about appealing if you're gonna go to superior court.
So I'm joining our exchange uh to have the Novo. Hearings on administrative appeal back in the early days of the law. Option of the Novo whenever.
Right, right, we're. It was only appeal of of the limited decision that was made. Not not of the facts that led to it. So that that's that's it.
That concludes our um agenda items. So I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
Now we ask one more question.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
But I think I I know the answer. On page five.
Bit of a lot side, George.
Uh yes. Uh when the first, they said in quote, quote, officers may waive setback requirements. Structure of twenty five feet. Uh twenty five square feet. We're talking about five by five building, right? Not a twenty five by twenty five. Twenty five square. We're talking about small five by five.
Now, how it's basically. A bus stop. Bus stop or a garbage can container. So I I would interpret it as something on the street. To keep shipping fly on the road, maybe your kids, you know.
I would like the uh bus stop little um thing, it's gonna feel that looks like Doctor Who's um British. That's your brother?
Yeah, that's his U P I. U P I's won't go down the road, so he built that.
Okay, well, I obviously got it wrong, but. That's what it reminded me to say. For coal.
He's an animal.
So we have very minor changes to the minimum lot size. Including the January to July. I think you have the latest electronic.
Yes, so, yeah, uh, I had offered to make the changes that we decided upon tonight. I'll do that. Hopefully tonight still, and I'll email that to Mary and Warna and CC all of you. Um, just so that, because tomorrow is the deadline for Mary to, um, post this, uh, for the public hearing.
So now, uh, so I undertake a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second? A second, so, uh, Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Zakara?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan is, say, five in favor, no opposed, we have none.